So my watch is gone again, so... But you did get the clock, thank goodness. Thank you very much. You said you would.
We have a flag, we have a clock, we have a lecture.
Amen. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
More official, man.
Thank you, thank you. Oh yeah, and now, on here, the American flag's always to the left as you're facing it. Is that Mr. Military Man? And then, there you go, I didn't see that was up there. And the other flag would be on your right.
State flag would actually be where the Tiff flag is, and the Tiff flag would be to its right.
That's correct. You know about when Hunter Walker was here, he did a trick. There's a guy that came here to teach the commission, who were commissioned at that time. And that joker came before the meeting. I can't see anybody that was here back at that time. And he moved the flags around. And then he asked us a trick question. Frank Dole, Bud Bowen, we all got mad at that guy. Said, "Don't you ever move our flag again." So I'll always remember where the American flag's supposed to be on the stage. All right, we'll go ahead and get started.
Mayor, if we start?
Yes.
The person that's requested, item number three, has been requested to be removed from the agenda for today. Of course, not, and took it back on later day.
Okay.
As an appeal from HBC.
Hey Jessica. Right, it's out of ink. You don't have another one with you, do you?
Well, I...
Thank you, man.
She gave me her spare pen.
Thank you, sir.
Was this your pen, Jessica?
You might get it to work, I can't get it to work.
Okay. I could've went out in the car and got another pen. I had to give mine to someone last time, but didn't give it back to me.
Those are good writing pens.
I love those pens.
All right, we've removed item number three from the discussion items. What's that? Oh, you're getting wrong.
The city attorney has had this been approved out of state, and he has received a warrant to go home.
Okay.
And he should be plugged into the DAS system as well.
And words?
Hello? Are you there?
I'm here.
Okay, Rob, we are in the workshop session.
Okay.
And you are with us by phone and in with us here also.
Okay, great.
Good afternoon, Rob.
Hey, how you doing?
Fine, sir, how's your father?
Uh, not real good.
Well, he's in our prayers, friend. He's in our prayer.
Thank you.
Uh, Larry, we don't have an officer in here. Well, you got a gun on?
I do, I follow that company's uniform. I found out just about an hour ago, so I'm here.
Well, thank you, sir. Okay, we're good. All right, we're gonna go ahead and start. It's good to see everybody today. Appreciate you all coming. Item number one would be the discussion of the Tiff Theater Board. Rob, can you hear us okay?
Rob, can you hear okay?
Not, I can hear Larry and you okay, irrelevant, but Matt, Matt's a conch very well.
Okay, hold on.
Could be this, all this reverb in here messing him up.
Tess, can you hear me now, Rob?
That's better.
Okay. Okay, Robert?
Sure. Um, what you have in front of you is just a draft to get a conversation started about the ambassador program that was established on the Tiff Theater. Currently, as it stands, there's a twelve-member board that has become so obsolete, going full of leadership of the Tiff Theater. And talking to other colleagues in New York, North Carolina, Ohio, and LA, this is something that their theater is going towards as well. Having the term ambassador as opposed to board, maybe just refreshing, and different way of approaching kind of the same types of tasks, but it's a, for lack of a better term, a user-friendly term for everyone. That's more appealing, especially towards my generation of getting involved with the theater. What I have in front of you is just a conversation starter draft, just talking about what kind of roles and responsibilities for the Tiff Theater Ambassador Program. The mission of the Tiff Theater Ambassador Program is to create a strong and lasting community presence, advocate for the arts, while helping assist with financial support for theater events and program. Currently, you know that I'm a one-man show, kind of do everything, and I'm looking over budget and things to see our financial growth. But moving forward, I can't do it alone. And I rely very heavily upon volunteers at the Tiff Theater to help make events possible. The, really the three target areas that this ambassador team would focus on would be advertising, volunteering, and some sort of financial responsibility. As far as advertising, helping to distribute promotional materials, help determine target marketing strategies, determine possible marketing and advertising opportunities that I may not know that exist, just kind of be an extra eyes and ears down the community, "Hey, how you talking about this?" Or maybe it'd be, "This is best one we should be promoting to theater here." Volunteering, if you've never worked in the theater, if they're part of a theater organization, you don't know how many, or how much manpower it takes to put on a event safely. I use the term "front of house." Front of house means is the individuals literally in the front of the theater. And that includes your box office, concessions, and someone greeting. So usually, for a theater event, you have someone in the box, you have someone greeting handing out programs, you have at least two people in concessions. That's just a front of house. Then you have someone doing tech, so we're up to five people. You have someone doing sound, you have someone backstage, so there's just a lot of hands on deck. So another responsibility of this ambassador program would help secure the volunteers for the front of house positions. So, you know, we're not panicking last second, "Oh gosh, I can't do concessions tonight because I'm up running the sound and I can't do two places at one time." It's just help create a great database, donor base, volunteer base for our theater. Going forward, that volunteering, the Tiff Theater will be starting to be open for tours on Saturday. And with a lot of donations of different pieces, of set pieces, and costumes, and photos, and archives, it'll be great to open those doors, to let, you know, tourists are going through, "Hey, the theater has a program tonight, but on the Saturday, Thursday, Saturday each month, our doors are open for you to come in, to touch, to feel, to see, to get on the stage, just to see the space." That's something that they would be assisting with as well. And then going toward the fiscal responsibility, this diverse group of individuals, this diverse group of hardworking individuals knows the community a lot better than I do. I've only been here a year and a half, and I feel like I'm making a stronger presence in the community and creating relationships and partnerships. But people who are suffering with this team can reach out further than I can. And they can help bring in individuals, for instance. You know, we did the Broadway and Bubbling, we just secured six scholarships, and I've had two private donors come forward and say, "I'll give another hundred twenty-five each for each student," so we're up to eight scholarships. So they can help me grow that database, so we can get more kids on that stage for scholarships. They can help, you know, bring in donors to help sponsor it, to help cut down our costs. You know, putting on musical, just the rights of music and royalties alone are anywhere between eighteen hundred and twenty-two hundred. And that's before you're doing costumes, turning on stage lights, doing anything. And that's just royalties of the show. And that's just a general music theater contract. And that's to help cover those costs, so we're not a story there, and we can come out to do good for the fiscal year. I would like a once-a-month meeting, but you know, that's open for discussion. I think once we determine and we lock down this group of ambassadors, I think it would be a group discussion of, "Okay, one week, once a week, I mean, once a month, but when are you available, when are you available, how's it gonna work into our already programs that are happening at the Tiff Theater?" I would like six individuals. I think that's a great number. We are not a large corporation. We are a presence in the community, and I think six individuals who are willing to work and get their hands dirty. This is not a social club, this is not, I'm here for face value, this is working up your sleeves and helping spread the good word about the theater, about the events.
Robert, can you?
That's...
We can't stop that? Can we mute him while Robert's talking?
Rob.
Yes.
Can you mute your phone?
Can I what? Mute my phone? Yeah.
Okay, Robert, I'm sorry.
Okay, sure, that's a little bit better. That, these are six individuals who are willing to help get out advertising, who are helping, helping spread the word, or help to do the, helping to do the front of house. I need individuals, a good, strong, arts-based group, who have a passion, who have a knowledge, and who are willing to, for lack of a better term, get their hands dirty, and really work with me to help grow the success of this theater.
That sounds good. Can I ask you something?
Sure.
Because we've always had an art-based group that's on the board, generally.
Sure.
Just food for thought, just throwing this out there. You still need that. But it'd be nice if we could get some people on the board that had a broader community interest, so they could bring in different kinds of people. And not just keep it, just for our artist friends to come in, because we want the theater to be successful. So, those, just somebody to have some buy-in for the theater to be successful. A business person, for example, maybe one of the owners of a store downtown, or somebody. Now, I don't want to mess up your art base, because I understand that's gotta be there. But could you consider maybe throwing some people in that may not be art-based, but support the theater, and we get out and generate some interest in it, and then help the community get behind us?
Oh sure, absolutely. I mean, yes, it's a strong art base, but it's not limited to.
Okay.
That would be gearing towards the application process of...
Okay.
This is the criteria, and these are individuals we're looking for to fill these positions. And if you need A, B, C, and D, or if these bullet points interest you, or you have a tie to one of these things listed, then let's have a conversation about being an ambassador to the Tiff Theater.
And you probably said this, but what's the total membership we're gonna have on this new board?
Six.
Only six?
Only six.
You don't want it to be larger than that?
Um, and doing some research, and having served on boards myself in North Carolina, I have found that the larger the board, there are too many cooks in the kitchen.
Okay.
And I feel like with this board, yes, we can bring others in to, I don't know if "commit" is not the right word, but yes, we can bring you in, but I think six is a good, solid, or that number is open for negotiation, clearly. But six solid people who are willing to commit to bring this in.
You know, Robert, before you arrived, and done a great job with the theater since you've been here.
Yes, right.
I was on the theater board for a few years, and actually was chairman of that board. And it was kind of large, and it was difficult getting everyone to show up.
Yes.
And then you had basically a core group of people who were passionate, that would always volunteer, and would be there. And then you had other people that would kind of come and go.
And that's why the lower numbers kind of miss it.
Right, it gets your stronger players on the team.
You have the ones that, "Well, I'm interested, and I want to help, and I can't commit once a month." But if you need to run concessions, then please call, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Robert, how will this panel be elected or appointed?
Sure. With how it stands of the board members as we have it, it's on paper, twelve, and reaching out four have expressed interest that they want to be a part of this ambassador program. Now, having said that, I think it would be fair for everyone to go through, since this board will be dissolving, that everyone have to go through the application process, not just because you're here and you're grandfathered in, but this is dissolving, let's start fresh, let's move forward with this. And, you know, if you're on the board, you need to fill the application too. And I think that's why I'm here, is to just get this conversation started, on what are our guidelines, and what do we want for this individual. I have some ideas, but I'm certainly here open for suggestions.
So this body would elect, or appoint the board members, right?
Mayor, what we have to do is, we would have to rewrite the board policy as it stands right now. And then the city council would actually appoint a board.
Right, okay.
The recommendations to council would come from the theater.
Okay.
And of course, if there's any member of council that has someone that they know that they'd be interested in, certainly they could fill out an application. It would be up to council to report to them.
Okay.
You probably already have a pretty good list already of candidates, yeah.
Do you have a name generation? And I think it's something that is open to everyone, and should be, I know that in this area, there are city, civic boards, and there are city and county, I think it should be open to anyone who has strong ties and strong feelings about the arts, and want success on this downtown venue to happen.
Okay.
What's the current terms of, do we have anybody on that board that does not?
They're all expiring right now, they expire December thirty-first.
All of the board members?
Yes.
All right. I pulled up the board member list off of the website, the city website, and called a couple of them. Some of them had great things to say about the theater, and of course, I think you're doing a great job. And then there were some other questions that they had. It says, "Few other board members have tried to get financial information so that they could make recommendations or strategic planning on possible revenue generating events." And the last theater manager either didn't give them the information, or pretty much just denied them or ignored their request. So it put a bad taste in their mouth.
Sure.
There's some individuals, they requested the information again and weren't ever given it, that, I don't, that's what I've been told. These folks see the theater as, like I say, a revenue generating entity, part of the city, with its whole sole purpose to try to generate as much revenue as possible so that it doesn't rely on taxpayer dollars.
Sure.
To fund. Can you answer anything to that, that?
I would like to ask you a question of who the definition of "they" are, because if I don't know of "they," then I can address individuals with those concerns. And everyone knows that the budget is public knowledge.
Right.
And I've only received three comments from Wayne Jones, from Ray, and Dave, that's along with the budget, personally.
Right.
And I started at my first board meeting, and I was here two weeks. And I was soaking my feet wet, and said, "Please, what we're gonna do," I don't have quite the numbers yet.
Sure.
Right. I have the budget with me, if you'd like to see that, where we are.
Well, I have that right here.
Sure, but the thing is, you know...
If I will say this, just to kind of throw in, some of that may have been when the downtown, the building authority ran the theater prior to the city taking that over. You had a completely different bunch of folks kind of running the show.
Mm-hmm.
So maybe those folks at that time were there, so... But I don't think we've got any problems with as far as the city folks not disclosing information. At least, I hope we don't.
Well, I, I mean, I'm, this is what I'm just being told. I asked them what their concerns were, and I told them, I said, "Well, there's a possibility of this, you know, dissolving this board." And I just asked for their opinion, you know, and he said that some of them felt that they're asked to be worked and to volunteer their hours, but when they give suggestions, they fall on deaf ears, and they feel that their strategic plans, or whatever for the theater, and their work, their manual labor, should go hand in hand, and is a package deal with their board service. So, you know, if all of the board members have, pretty much, their terms have expired, I mean, we, like I say, going, starting fresh can be something done. Now, you name, you call them ambassadors, I guess we'd still call it a board, because in our charter, we're only able to appoint commissioners, board members, and authority members. We're not, it says not anything about ambassadors. I mean, that's a legal question, I guess. Would we have to change the charter for that, for those wording, for words?
We'll look into that. But I think we need to make something perfectly clear to everyone, and that is that the Tiff Theater is not funded with general fund tax dollars. It is funded with hotel motel fund tax dollars.
Because it generates, it generates tourism.
It is an enterprise fund. It is set up to eventually become self-sufficient, so we don't have to worry about any monies from the general fund going into the theater.
Well, we subsidize a great bit, because as of today...
We do, because there's a lot of capital projects to have, but we have to, we still have to take care of getting the position out of the camp.
Not, including that capital, into the capital projects money.
That's a very big project.
It's, yeah, we're having to subsidize a lot of the operating expenses, so I'm just...
Oh, yes, absolutely.
We need that, go ahead.
I'm not, I'm not saying that this thing's gonna turn around and make, you know, it's gonna be a cash cow noir. And I mean, I just know, and we're taking the right steps, because actually, we're on target to outpace what we projected, based on the current revenues that you've generated so far of thirty-one, and I think we anticipated, in fee income, this is what I'm talking about, the fee income. We've projected on the revised budget thirty-four five, so we're actually outpacing our projected pace. So I'm not saying that that's not, I just think, just because we made it, doesn't mean we don't, we can't exceed it.
Exactly. And we knew that, you know, it was like taking baby steps when the city took it over. You know, we were gonna have to build it from the bottom up, and the first six months was just finding someone to be able to run the theater. So we've had someone on board for a year and a half, and you all have seen where it started and where it is now. And I would venture to say, it's, we're still a couple of years out, you know?
But it's already night and day.
Yeah.
Improvement already.
But it's a tremendous improvement. Robert is really...
Robert, on the, we'll say, your ambassadors, whatever we legally call them in our paperwork, ambassador kind of sounds more woman-friendly, you know, to the general public.
Absolutely.
On the term of their appointment, I think you've got to be determined. Ron and Larry, you guys recommended maybe the same type of system, where maybe every, they rotate off? Or y'all want to do a year thing? Or how are you feeling with that on your program draft here?
I have toyed with one-year versus two-year appointment, and I've had some conversations. It's just how deep do you want this committee group? If you're saying, "Oh, I want six, and they need to work," you know, from time you have one year, you get a well-oiled machine, and then you come in, and you have to kind of stop a little bit and keep going. Versus, kind of versus a two-year, where you can really build, bring people in, and kind of self-provide for the next year to come. So, I mean, I've, which I've reached out, and some people, one, some people would look to your appointment. I think, two, would be like the max. I don't think that punishing someone, and it's not my word, but if, you know, not expiring the charter, they've worked for two years, and like, "You know what, I want to commit another two," then they should be willing to do that. And for those, after the two-year service is up, you know, I will, I will help you, but I just want to serve this role for you.
I think what we're gonna have to do is, we're gonna have to stagger the term of this year.
Yeah.
And then once we get, get the rotation where everybody comes and rotates on and off the board,
Right.
then the rotation would be like the one-year terms, with the option to reappoint those people if they won't be reappointed, but if they're one-year term, and if they're rolling one-year terms between the six or five, or how many people decide to put it?
That way, you wouldn't rotate all six at one time, and then have...
You don't want to stagger a term, you need to at least have, if you have, if you all decide that six people is sufficient, you need to have at least a one-year term and a two-year term. And I would suggest to you, you have initially, a one-year term, two-year term, and a three-year term. And then from that forward, you determine whether you want them to be reappointed every year or every two years. That way, you're going, the maximum folks that you would lose in any given year would be two people.
There you go.
Just a suggestion.
Robert, before you go, tell us about some events that are gonna be happening in the, at the Tiff Theater here.
Okay, this is, that's my kind of answer right here. We have our final dress rehearsal tonight in the next fifteen minutes. We have directions, we started youth theater programs on directions. It's for kids, at the ninth, I mean, starting kindergarten through twelfth grade. And we started this in the fall, and now we are up to forty-two kids involved. It's on my day-to-day program, and the goal is to educate and expose them to the arts. And they have Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, their performance. And it's allowed, it's their first time on stage, so it's been really great to see them come alive. So we have directions this weekend. We have a touring show that's going through called "The Doll Loves Books." And that will be on April the twenty, something like, the last, whatever the last Wednesday of the month is. And we have schools coming in from Franklin County and Surry County, it's coming. We have Harvey, which you may know, that James Stewart, he's popular, imaginary bunny for Lynette's, going on in May. We just had our annual fundraiser Broadway and Bubbling at the dance school last weekend. We have Amy Sunshine is coming through, she will be in May. And we have two grades of our concerts going as well. So it's, the question is now, is anything going on with the theater, trying to change the conversation, what's happening at the theater this week? And I would encourage you to visit our website, Tiff Theater, that lists all the events that we're sponsoring, but also the events of community members and organizations in the community, have way now that the theater sponsors their own events as well.
Thanks, Rob.
I think that the directions is a good example of one way he's able to generate some revenue, because it's a three-month program, it's twenty-five dollars a month. It gets a student into the theater once a week.
Sure.
You know, and yeah, we have over forty kids involved, so that's an actual, a nice pool of money that he does two or three times a year, right?
Right, we have, just like school, we have a spring semester and fall semester, and we have the same group, one for management, one for youth school. And we also have some, a monthly change, as everybody's involved in that, and that can be production handed to kids.
And I was reading a quote, a good phrase this morning, he says, "It's gonna get the kids off the streets and on stage."
Off the streets and on stage, I like.
My granddaughter is in directions, and she absolutely loves it. She's having the time of her life.
Great.
Thank you, Rob.
And I know you have a person who's one year.
Right, thank you. If you have any further questions or comments from our talking, please, please email me, or we can be for a couple of coffee somewhere, and we'll talk more about the theater.
Thank you for your hard work, Robert. Appreciate what you're doing. Item number two is the approval of the top scoring consultants for the FY 2015 CDBG. Authorize the city manager to enter negotiations for professional services for 2015 CDBG project. Ms. Jessica?
This year, you know, we all are in line for the 2015 CDBG project for, and we're doing it, y'all know the projects, it's Project Five. I'll write off an agno, it's the drainage ditch behind the bowling alley, you know, you're trying to work in New York, familiar with it. We have advertised, and we're seeing proposals from engineering firms and consultants. The consultants will administer the CDBG grant, and the engineer will prepare the plans. And our recommendation is to use Bob Barson Associates and Watkins and Associates. Scott Murphy, it's not here, but Scott and three other employees that are project managers, and two of them are our staff engineers here, they've reviewed the proposals.
And have we ever heard your recommendations, man? To the engineers, too? And the score sheets are available, I think I would like to review.
Do you have the total package, about that thick?
And what, that you signed the application?
That gives, that gives the details on what's gonna be done, and so forth, and so on? Do we have that yet?
I can get it.
The scope?
I'm full.
Guess that'd be the scope. Just throw one of those in my basket at some point, so I can get an idea of exactly what all this, because I got people asking me about that. So I need to read the whole thing, so I'm not telling somebody wrong, that's on the land. Thank you, Jessica, appreciate that. The next item. Request, request for appeal on the HBC case H...
I'm sorry.
I'm reading out of two different things here, okay, that one, that one's gone. Okay, now, Donna, the James Dove Scholar Shop Award.
Yes, Brad, ready for you. Two applicants have been chosen this year. We, and this year probably had over a dozen applicants, in the community, of several staff. And also Scott, I think, did more, and then we got Ernest Duff, and then... And, uh, also Scott, I mean, did more, and then we had Ernest Duff, and then, um, and he made the last pick, and with these two applicants, before you got two high votes. So, that's pretty much how we pick them.
Okay.
And, uh, we all secretly put our little ballots in there together, and, uh, these two were the ones that came on top. And, uh, the information we have there, and before you, um, they're varied, and they're, they're both, uh, not only are they, uh, four-point-oh GPA average students, but you can see they're very, like, involved in community. And, uh, they both have a plan, they're not sure what they wanna do, but they're, they both have, uh, applications, so it's been accepted, one, one of the university programs, uh, you can stay here and, uh, and go to Aback.
Oh, great.
We are, uh, very happy for this, and, uh, said we'd like to bring that to you, Councilman Amy and May, and let you award the checks to the two students, and Ernest will be here as well.
Very good, very good. Thank you, Donna, appreciate that.
Mayor, if you may, uh, let me just read something off for you right here. Ms. Bealyn's, uh, eleventh grade, second semester. She had advanced markings, she made a ninety-five in it, AP Calculus, made a hundred in AP Calculus, uh, ninety-three in AP Language, and ninety-five in Honors Physics. She's, uh, her twelfth grade year, she did, uh, English eleven-oh-two at Aback, she got a ninety-nine average.
Okay.
This, this girl's on her toes. Not only that, she's got a ninety, uh, ninety-four point eight-six GPA, and out of four, she ranked thirty. So, that, that's saying that the Tiff County School System is very, very strong, and we got a good group of kids, uh, in our school system, is doing a great job.
Both of them did a very excellent, uh, job on the, we always ask them to do an essay on natural gas and how to fix their communities, so, uh, they were very personal, um, not just on the book, and, uh, me, that, that went towards them as well, so they're, both of them very deserving.
Both of them, very impressive.
Yeah, just, did you mention Raymond Merritt had a, had a GPA of, uh, four-point-oh, ninety-nine, point-two-fifty, I mean, it's awesome.
Both of them are ve- very intelligent, very deserving of this award or scholarship.
Wow, good choice, thank you, Donna. Item number five is the discussion of ordinance providing for amendment to the Land Development Code to remove clubs, lodges.
Hey, Rob, can you hear me? Take your phone off me.
Okay. All right, can you hear me?
Yeah, we got you. Uh, item five is the discussion of ordinance providing for amendment to the Land Development Code for clubs and lodges and for new reuse and commercial downtown. Can you talk, can you talk to us about that a little bit?
Yeah, listen, uh, if you all remember, uh, at the last meeting, we were discussing, uh, climate getting, uh, compliance with the, um, Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Purchase Act. And what we had to do was make sure that we created secular organizations, and we get religious organizations. Which was why the, uh, initial Rob was to include such a lodge, or, 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 sort of, create a secular organization to save religious organizations. But one of the issues that came up, or a couple of issues that came up, uh, one by, uh, Wes and one by Jamie. So, Wes was concerned about, can a civic club go downtown and meet at a local restaurant? Uh, Jamie had concerns about, uh, the ability of a, uh, a preacher, uh, coming in, uh, preaching to the field.
So, hold on, Rob, Rob, hold on a minute.
Did we unplug it?
Not attached, not attached to this. What he's done is define the use of, what he's done is define use of clubs and lodges, and he's included it in the land use.
Okay.
Is that, isn't that correct, Rob?
Uh, I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
I let them know that you, uh, defined the use of club or lodge as a private facility, and you've also included it in the land, you've included the land use, um, schedule.
So, basically, yeah, uh, the plan that I, you know, I had a meeting, I think it's Larry, uh, Christopher, partner, Wes, uh, who we had dating the father, partner, and Bert. And we tried to kinda think through this thing a little bit more after our last meeting. And so, what, uh, what I did is redefine what a club or lodge was. Initially, in the, uh, current, as it's fine now, and I don't have a right conundrum, but it, it defines a club or lodge as an association of, of a group. Well, the growth, the religious facility definition talks about a building, that is regularly used for worship. So, what I did is I took, uh, clubs and lodges to find it as a building versus an, an, an association. And by doing that, I, I defined a club or lodge as a building in which an incorporated or unincorporated association regularly assembles, and that is not open to the general public. Then, with that definition defining, defining it as a building, uh, that is, you know, uh, regularly used, not open to the public, that, in my opinion, would then allow civic organizations to meet at a local, at a restaurant downtown commercial. Because, uh, it's not a building that is open to the pu-, general public. I mean, that restaurant is a, is a building open to the public, that would then not fit in with the definition of a club or lodge on the LBC. And then when you start, when you look at the definition of a religious facility, let me pull that up right quick. A religious facility is, is defined as a building in which persons regularly assemble for religious worship, intended primarily for purposes connected with that worship, or for property in a particular form of religious belief. Now, the, the key phrase with religious facility is a building which persons regularly assemble for religious worship. So, you know, under that definition, you know, if, uh, a preacher, the light comes, a preacher in the building is downtown commercial, that would be okay, because it is not, that building is not a place that is, uh, a regular assembly for religious, religious worship. So, I think by defining clubs or lodges as a building, uh, where, you know, associations meet to the building is not open to the public, that would allow, you know, meetings of that civic organization at a, uh, at a restaurant downtown. And I believe that the definition of a religious facility, meaning a regular, uh, place of worship, uh, would not prohibit a, uh, a preacher that come into a building downtown and, and, uh, and preaching, or, or giving a talk, or the case may be. So, what I'm, what I'm hoping and what I'm thinking is that, uh, the thing here, as we discussed earlier, was to make sure that we treat the secular organizations the same as religious organizations. And by redefining, uh, what a club or lodge is, uh, we are in fact accomplishing all the purposes that we want, treating them the same, uh, but it then does allow periodic meetings, uh, of civic clubs and, uh, uh, religious organizations to have a, a preacher come in. So, I believe that this is, this will accomplish, uh, everything that we wanted to accomplish.
And Rob, the key word there is regularly assembled. Is that correct?
Listen, I'm having a little bit of trouble hearing you.
Can you hear me now?
Okay.
All right. No, I was gonna say, the, uh, the key word in all of the, uh, the, the changing of the definition is regularly assembled. Is that correct?
Right.
Right.
Now, the, the, the main change in, in defining a club or lodge, really is fact that rather than just, you know, under the old definition of a club or lodge, it just tells you, you hate to define the definition of association. The biggest change is that we're defining a club or lodge as a building, and by defining it as a building, you know, then, you know, it's, it's very similar to our language of use, when we define a religious facility.
Rob, do I need to summarize that?
You, you probably do, probably do for me, because I hear what he's saying, I don't see what he's saying, this is what's gotta get signed.
The case members are in the Land Development Code.
That's not on here.
No.
Because I need to see that.
Look on back.
It's on the back.
But, it still doesn't say everything I heard him say.
Okay, which question, which first?
I, I hear what he's saying, which satisfied my concern.
Right.
Maybe it cons-, it satisfied Wes's concern that you could have a club down there, I just don't see it anywhere on there.
You can't have a club downtown.
No, 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 but you can have a building where a club comes down to eat at the building that's a restaurant.
That's right.
That's right. As long as it's not a regularly assem-, as long as they don't regularly assemble at that location, that's what the, the, that's why I was making emphasis on that.
A lodge, a building which an incorporated or incorporated association regularly assemble.
For civic. They can meet for a civic or social, as long as it's not on a regular basis.
Where does it say that here? Where does it say that?
The way that it's defined is that you would not meet without a.
No, that's, that's not saying that.
The DFW or the U-S Lodge downtown.
Right.
Because that would be a building in which you are meeting that is, which is not open to the general public. But since a, a restaurant is open to the general public, it would, you know, a restaurant would not fit in, and, and people meeting at a restaurant would not fit the definition of a club or lodge.
Explain it to me. Using his verbiage here, tell, tell me that somebody can look this up, and a club can come and eat at a place that's a restaurant.
We don't say that.
Or that, or that Billy Graham could come and preach at a theater, because it's a theater. Does that say that?
This defines what a club or a lodge or private, it's a building, this is the definition of a club or lodge or private association. It's not the use that we're talking about.
I know, that has to be addressed.
So, if they, if the Rotary Club wants to come down to, um, a restaurant downtown and worship downtown district, they can, as long as they don't do it on a regular basis.
Oh, okay, well.
Because it's a restaurant on a regular basis, it's not a place for them to come and do everything they do.
But, but, okay.
It's not like the Quanis, they're, they're, whatever, whoever Quanis meet now, they, they need to such a such a location, on such a such a day, at such a such a time, on a regular basis.
So, they can't do that downtown at one of our restaurants here?
Not on a regular basis.
I see.
But they can, if they would come down to, if Quanis wants to come down and go to La Cabana one week, and go to the lec-, local the next week, and to, uh, the next restaurant down the next week, they can, because they're not in the same location at a regular time, on a regular basis.
And this spells that out, so there's no miss, miss.
I don't know how to explain. I mean, basically, you know, the Quanis Club, you know, they don't have a building that they meet. They need it, you know, wherever they wanna meet at a restaurant, or where, wherever they decide. When you start talking about the type of restrictions that we want to place on downtown commercial, we're talking about having a building basically dedicated, you know, for the use of a civic club. So, it's like taking the U-S Lodge and putting it downtown. Uh, that, that would fit the definition of a civic club or lodge, because it is a building where they meet, that is not open to the general public.
Uh, Rob, the, the, uh, current definition of a club or lodge is an incorporated or unincorporated association for civic, social, cultural, religious, fraternal, uh, political, or recreational, or like activities operated to the benefit of its member and not open to the general public. We are calling, we are saying that it is a building, is that correct, instead of association?
But, that's why, see, by, you know, by saying, uh, but, by establishing.
We're not banning the club association itself, or the use of the building.
Similar to a, uh, religious facility, but you see, you know, that makes a religious, religious facility is talking about a built, you can't have a building where you regularly meet for worship. So, by, uh, so that prohibits basically, you know, storefront churches. Now, by defining a civic organization or lodge as a building, simply tied to how you define a religious facility, we're basically saying you cannot have a storefront club, for lack of better words. You're not taking a building and having that occupied, either by a religious organization or by a civic club. So, like I say, it's just like, you know, the, the idea here is that you're not taking, uh, some, an organization such as the U-S Club, who then establishes a separate building that's closed to public where they meet.
Okay, but the verbiage that you have here in this ordinance would allow a Billy Graham to come and do a one-time thing at the theater, is that correct?
That's correct.
That's right.
And it would allow a civic club to not come to the sa- same place every week, but to come to one of the restaurants downtown, maybe different restaurants all through the month. That would allow that.
That might be quite, the way this is written, except if the Quanis Club wanted to meet at La Cabana once a month, since what, since that is not a building that is, that, uh, that is not open to the public, then that, that would not classify as a club or lodge. So, you know, the, the Quanis Club could meet at La Cabana once a month, you know, for their regular meeting, because La Cabana would not be a building where civic organizations meet that is not open to the public, because La Cabana is open to the public. So, that takes a, a restaurant out of the definition of a, uh, club or lodge, because it's not a building that's not open, it's not open to the general public.
Now, yes.
But now, the interpretation of regularly assembled is what, I mean, because if they met at the same time once a month, wouldn't you consider that regularly assembling?
I was gonna be.
Well, I'm, I'm having a little bit of a hard time hearing you, but the, but the, but the main, the main phrase when you talk about a restaurant like La Cabana, is the fact that, you know, because it is open to the public, it would not fit in the definition of a club or lodge.
Okay, so this was the final version, the previous version was, that we had to rotate these guys around, and so now we can have this, they can, they can actually leave, can you hear me again, Rob?
Yeah, I can hear that.
So, to be clear, what you're telling us is that if the Quanis wants to go to La Cabana and have their meetings there once a month, that's okay?
That's correct.
Why couldn't they go once, once, why couldn't they go once a week?
Or if Rotary wants to have a meeting at a, at a restaurant downtown once a week, they can do that.
That's right, because, you know, because it's not a building that is, is open to the public, it's a building that's open to the public, and it's not fit in the definition of a lodge.
But that is regular.
What we're looking at is the building.
Right.
Yeah, you know, and, and, of course, when you look at the building, you can equate.
You can't, that's not.
A storefront church with the U-S Lodge. You can't have the U-S Lodge downtown, you know, and you can't have a storefront church downtown.
They can't have a, a religious facility, but, if, okay, just use, for example, if, uh, the, took and bring it back to church, wanted to have a church service every Sunday at the Tiff Theater, did they do that?
No.
Why not?
Because that, that, that becomes a, uh, whether, using it as a regular place of worship.
But so does the Quanis Club going once a week to a certain restaurant, wouldn't that be the regular, uh, regularly assembled? I don't understand the, the differentiation there.
Uh, you, I think, uh, I think our, uh, first, uh, scenario where they went from restaurant to restaurant, because if you stay at the same restaurant, you are regularly assembling at that location.
Regularly assembled at the same restaurant.
So, you would have to rotate, you cannot be at the same place, that's what we discussed in that.
The need is, is you to be building there instead of use.
That, the regular.
That's right.
The regular, regular use part of this, Rob, you gotta get back to the Land Development Code, to the first paragraph.
The regular, regular use part of this, Rob, you gotta get back to the land development code, to the first paragraph before that, and it's, it, it addresses regular use of the facility. Remember? I know this is confusing, because we've talked about it about fifteen different times. That's right, and I'm just saying, it's not, you know, the, the, it's, we're trying to, um, there's, there's two things we're trying to do. One, is if you don't want to have a building that is basically being, and I don't wanna say primary permanent use, but you don't wanna have, you, we don't wanna have storefront churches or clubs or lodges where they are a permanent fixture, because, you know, that has issues with parking, it has issues with, you know, economic development. But at the same token, what we're trying to do is allow for, um, uses of buildings that are not permanent, you know, a permanent fixture and permanently used for that purpose, um, to, to, to be utilized, you know, on a, you know, on a periodic basis. So I certainly appreciate Jamie's situation, her position, that the theater should be able to be used periodically, you know, for, uh, a religious assembly for a revival or a, a, a prayer session or whatever. But once you start using that building on a regular basis for, uh, for worship, then that starts putting, making, putting into the definition of a religious facility. And one of the things that we had discussed, you know, with, with Bert and, and you Larry and Wes, was that, you know, when you start talking about what is a regular use, that is only something that's gonna be, you know, where, where code is gonna be looking at, okay, how often is this building being used, is this a regular use, if it's a regular use as a, a religious facility, uh, uh, for religious worship, then it's gonna fit in the definition of a religious facility and not allow. Okay, let, let me, let me just take, take a, take a break there, Rob. The, the intent of what we're trying to accomplish is to treat clubs and religious facilities in the same manner as required by state law, correct? Right. Okay? Right. So in order to do that, what we're, and, and we may have to, uh, pull this land development code out a little bit further and look at it again, but what we're trying to do is to say, the regular use of the theater for a religious facility, i.e. every Sunday, is not allowed, correct? That's right. So therefore, if we're gonna treat clubs and civic organizations the same, then the regularly, the regular use of a restaurant, the same restaurant, the same time, every month, is a regular use of that facility, and that would not be allowed. But the reason why I, you know, the reason why I'm saying that that, that could be allowed, and I, I hear where you're going with this, is that, you know, civic organizations, uh, you know, get the building not open to the public.
That's the, that's the key.
Then, as the land development codes, you know, says it now, is that then that would not fit into the definition of a public lodge, because a restaurant is open to the general public, whereas the way that the definition is drafted is that the building has to be closed to the general public.
That's right, so what you're tell-
Like the upslod.
Uh, Rob, it's Wes, and, so basically, the, the key words to this paragraph that you got right here is, "A building in which an association regularly assembles not open to the general public."
I'm sorry, Wes, I, I never seen you in that.
I said, the, uh, the, taking apart your paragraph here, or your, your definition here, it says, uh, what you're saying is, is a building in which an association regularly assembles that's not open to the public, the general public. A restaurant, you said, would be open to the general public as well as the Tiff Theater, because it's a public building. So you couldn't have a regu- you, wait a minute.
That's right, you couldn't have a regular, uh, somebody doing that regularly at the theater, nor can you do it regularly at the restaurant.
Right, but now they're saying that the building of the restaurant is not, is, is open to the general public, that's why you can, that's what he's-
No, wait a minute, it is open to the public, they're both open to the public.
Exactly.
They are, and therefore you cannot, you know, be regular.
But he's saying they can, for the clubs.
Probably can't sleep with that. Uh, about four hours.
Yeah.
We, hey, when you get back to town, uh, we'll, we'll clean this up and make sure it's clear as mud for the, uh, May fourth workshop, but I think everybody understands what the intent that we're trying to do, y'all can get with it.
Right, yeah.
The intent, yeah.
Okay, so everyone- Yeah, this is-
I don't think we're there yet.
This, this is not, you know, uh, you know, Wes particularly and Chris were a part of it, uh, and Larry and Bert, uh, you know, we, we met for maybe several hours talking through this thing, you know, trying to, you know, make it work, and, uh, and, you know, and try to satisfy Wes's concerns, Chris's concerns, Dave's concerns. So, uh, I mean, this, this certainly is a, could be a work in progress, this is my best, uh, effort in trying to accommodate, you know, what we wanna try to do. So, uh, we can, you know, we, we can take another look at it, we're not in any danger at this point. Uh, so we, we've got time to, to, you know, hack through this thing some more, and anybody that has any thoughts on it, just shoot me an email and, and, uh, and I'll put it in the op. Uh, uh, Rob, I think everybody on council's on board with the not having a regularly scheduled meeting at either location, whether it's a restaurant, a club, a religious organization, or whatever, uh, and, and it's, the discretion, uh, on the code enforcement side lies with them, and they can handle it as written, uh, I, I think the confusion's coming in here is that-
The scenarios, Wes.
The scenarios have not been, uh, the land development code, we didn't go back far enough and quote that particular part of the code to make this clear as to how it would work. So we'll get that cleaned up, and then we'll move forward. Well, one, one thought as we were talking through this, is that, you know, again, the, the main goal was making sure we're treating civic organizations the same as religious organizations. But the, it can be a little bit troubling when you start thinking about civic organizations, where you would meet in downtown restaurants. So we, that, that may, that may be problematic.
Uh, ma- uh, Mayor, can, can Bert, can you address us?
But it's, but Larry's already said it.
That's true, I mean, that's right.
We, we have this thing worked out, it's just not, it's, it's kind of crossed up.
I'd wanna come up here so he can hear, if you want to.
He can probably hear me.
Okay.
Can you hear me, Rob?
Yeah.
Okay, bottom line is that according to what we're looking at, we're looking at uses, not buildings, that's the first thing to remember. We're looking at the use of buildings, not buildings themselves, buildings are, don't matter really, it's the use of those buildings. The situation is that you gotta have equal use of those buildings between religious organizations and, or civic clubs. And it's gotta be equal, so if you don't allow one, you can't allow the other, if you do allow one, you do allow the other. So in this case, we've chosen, as it has always been, I say always, since I've been here, then if it did not allow religious organizations in the downtown commercial district, I mean, that's what we're talking about. So to make the federal law correct, we have to not allow civic organizations in the same district. Okay, which we had allowed them up to a certain point, this is a federal mandate, okay?
Right.
So what we're doing is we're saying, and this is from an enforcement standpoint now, and I'm shifting it, there is no problem with a religious organization having a one-time event in a building downtown. A building, I, I could personally, or as a department care, does which building, okay, as long as it's a building downtown. However, it's a one-time event, okay, so it's not on a regular scheduled basis, i.e. every Sunday, i.e. every once a month, every scheduled basis. At the same time, the same thing would also apply for a civic organization, if they come downtown, they only can come down on a one-time basis, i.e. come to a restaurant, or come to a building, they may wanna rent a theater for an event, they would be allowed to have that there. I wouldn't have no problem with Mr. Gregor coming down and preaching a one-time event in the theater, or at La Cavana. I mean, it, it, it doesn't matter, I mean, it's a building. Now, if he said, I'm gonna set up and have a ministry in here every Sunday at La Cavana, or at the theater, I'm using those two as examples, that would be that. As in, if the-
They'd be in violence.
Upslod decided to have a upslod east and set up in downtown Tiff, and say, we're gonna meet every week at La Cavana, everyone will meet every week at the theater, that would be a no-go.
Same with the club, like Kiwanis.
That's right.
They, they can meet at a one-time.
That's right, and then they can go, they can meet somewhere else, I wouldn't have a problem, they would pick out on a regular basis where they advertise to meet every Wednesday at noon at El Calle de Dor, I mean, I mean, La Cavana, and so, that would be a no-go, that would not be allowed.
They could do it at a one-time event.
One-time shop, you know, six months later, decide you all are gonna have dinner again, I don't have no problem with that, that's enforceable, it's billable, it's well within the guidelines, not given the direct requirement to enforce that. I'm comfortable with that from a status standpoint.
But I think what you're saying, Bert, and I don't know that I disagree with it, is that really, in order to treat religious organizations, civic organizations the same, then really you can't have a civic club come down to La Cavana and meet on a regular basis.
That is absolutely correct.
That's right, that's it, that's, that's it.
I think that's, I think that's probably right.
That's right.
Okay, that's-
All righty then, can we move on?
Yes, we can, thank you, Bert. Thank you, Rob, thank you, Larry. Thank all three of you, and all the hard work, thank you. Okay, we're ready to, to move on to the, um, next item, which is the, uh, item number six, which is the HPC appointments, Ms. Robb?
Yes, sir, we, uh, we got some good news from Marks and Middleton, she has decided to, that she would like to continue to serve on the HPC as well as Martin Peterman. Um, but Erica Johnson, um, I think I reported before, is not interested in continuing to serve at this time.
Right.
Okay.
So if you would like, I can put them on, those two on for reappointment for the May meeting.
Let's see, with you?
All staff and servants have been addressed regarding the appointments, and we're good.
Okay.
Good, yeah, I'm good with that.
I'm good with that. We don't, we don't have anybody in Ms. Johnson's place, Erica's, okay? We have any applications? Nothing?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, was there any other clubs we needed to discuss? I mean, any other organizations?
We just still have, um, outstanding member on the tree board that we can see, that they can see.
Is, 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 is Joe gonna stay? He just didn't wanna stay as chairman, right?
Joe Forrest?
Uh-huh.
Yes, sir, he's still on.
Okay. Okay, that sounds good. Okay, and then the appointment to the housing authority, that would be, uh, Sherri Wright. I believe she'll be sworn in, public meeting, the next public meeting.
That is, that is in the vice statute, that that is an appointment of the mayor, and he is, Mayor Kader has appointed Ms. Wright, and she has been notified.
Okay. Okay, item number eight, is the discussion of solar power grant from the GFA, Larry?
Yes, sir, this is just for information, although of course, Bill Lewis and research on this, you may recall, uh, since or eight months ago, we put in a pre-application for a solar energy grant to put a solar farm out of the Westport Freeway Plant, uh, a one-megawatt solar Freeway Farm, or, solar Freeway Farm, yeah, solar power farm. Well, we can treat sick or solar out there, you know.
Sure we could.
We did, actually, were awarded a five hundred and seventy thousand dollar energy grant for that. That is a twenty percent grant, the total cost of that project is about two point two million. Uh, at this point in time, it's, God, it's not here tonight, but, uh, I've asked E S G to look into this, their engineers and so forth. It's very, it's a very expensive project, you can get twenty, thirty, or, or thirty-year financing with it. Uh, overall, it would reduce your electrical costs for, uh, the Westport Freeway Plant. Uh, but I'm not, at this point in time, I'm not sure it's a prudent thing to do to enter into two point two million dollars worth of debt for twenty years on our Westport Freeway Plant.
Right, I agree.
So, we will have more information, we do, we do not have to answer or have our application in for the grant, the formal application until June thirtieth, I believe.
Okay.
So we have more time to look into it, we have traveled up to Dublin and looked at the solar, uh,
At high school?
At Dublin High School, we, we did go up and look at that, it's very good stuff, I mean, they're, they're putting in solar farms all over the United States.
We've seen them on the side of the railroad track, yeah.
Uh, but the question is, is now the time to jump into it? And, uh, is the two point two million dollar price tag that we've been, uh, presented, could we get it the same one-megawatt farm for less money than two point one million? Okay, that's what we're checking on.
What happened to Chris? Did the buyers get him when he went out?
Stepped into the restroom.
Huh?
Stepped into the restroom.
Will you check him? He's gone, yeah.
No, I'm not.
He's been gone a while, yeah.
The, uh, the next time under June twenty-
Yes.
Are you up to the G M A listening session?
Whoa, whoa, whoa. You're right, go ahead.
I was already standing, that's why I thought I was just-
Yes, that's fine, I, I'd already skipped the ten.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four, so we need to know if any of council would like to go there, I think we have a response from some of you already.
Look, I wanna make a statement, now, Alma's not in District eleven. Alma's never been in District eleven, has she? Alma, Georgia, maybe I'm confused, where is Alma exactly?
That's probably across maybe.
Out of Douglas. Yeah, you got a Douglas and go that way.
Oh, I thought Alma was further north than that, but it is in District eleven, I'm confused.
It is, it's further than twenty.
Okay, 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 well then that's fair enough then.
If any of you would like to go there, uh, I'll be going, and, uh, I may have to drive, if you're on carpool or, I would be on bus, so, just letting you know, but I need to know tomorrow, by tomorrow.
What's, what's the, that didn't see on there, what generally, what time's that over, what time, if we go?
That's generally by a little bit more than two at least.
Thought we asked up here with twenty-four?
We have one down in Adele, last time it was closed by Johnny.
That's a Friday, no, we've got the opening of the Mayan that week, but not that day. Yeah, that day's, what, I don't think there's anything that day.
Jessica had to leave, and she's gotta work, but they didn't leave on to you?
It was.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't question.
Okay, well, I'm glad to know they are in District eleven, I, but they are at the jumping off point up there, so. Yeah, they're over there somewhere, okay.
GPS map, please.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, Rob, still moves? Yeah.
Item number ten, uh, discussion of the orange vine for amendment, distances?
Come out and call Rob.
Okay, uh, let me just try to give a quick overview about where we've been and why we're here. Um, we had some issues as far as, uh, how we were defining our distances, uh, where they sell alcohol to churches and school campuses, uh, and school buildings. So if we took a look at, uh, at the elements, what we were looking to do was define more clearly the distance requirement, so how do we measure from the sale of alcohol to churches, um, school buildings, educational buildings, college campuses. So what, uh, what you have is basically a rendition to the code of the second six dot six five. In section six dot six five is the portion of the alcohol chapter that discusses location. So what I, what you had in front of you is basically what the state law, uh, required for the most part. Uh, understand that state law does not regulate on-premise consumption if, if your city or family regulates on-premise consumption. So when you look at the first portion of this, uh, the post ordinance, this is really dealing with patent sales. Uh, subsection G, I believe, is what, is when we're talking about on-premise consumption. So, basically, you know, what, what state law, uh, deals with is, is subsection N talks about the sale of the school spirit, uh, within two hundred yards of school building, educational building, school grounds, uh, college campuses-
uh, college campus or church building. Subsection B does not, you know, talks about the sale of wine and malt beverages. Again, this, this is right out of state law, but as you can see, state law does not regulate the sale of wine for malt beverages, uh, re, uh, patents as it relates to church buildings. It does regulate distances such as school buildings, school grounds, and college campuses. And there's also an exclusion there for talk about grocery stores. I don't know how that is important to us, but basically the, the thought was is that in some, uh, communities, there, uh, there's a desire to have grocery stores that may be located in close proximity where they sell beer and wine, so they want to collect that. But they assign grocery stores to eighty-five percent being grocery items. So basically, when you look the first part of this ordinance, this is basically state law, this is the business requirements that are required under state law. And that's basically the minimum requirements that we have to follow, uh, because that's state law. It does not mean that we cannot make it, you know, the distances greater, and it does not mean that we don't have to include churches when we start about the retail sale of malt beverages and wine. But understand right now, state law does not regulate business requirements for the retail sales of wine and malt beverages to churches. And if you want to, you ought to be more restricted than state law, you have that option. Uh, the, the other thing that was important that led us to this thing, and, and you all might recall when I talked about it at the creek, there was a real issue about what is a church building? And, you know, we talked about, is it the parsonage, is it the right center? Uh, I actually sat down at lunch with the fellow that gave the, uh, the seminar on Monday, uh, with the, the tax association. And basically, you know, I told them what my issue was about the definition of church building, and we'd not want to, uh, you know, render to state law problems. And basically what he said was that because state law does not prohibit the sale of malt beverages and wine, uh, in, in proximity to churches, it was just a thing, as it was mine, that we can define a church building in any means that we want to and regulate with retail sale of malt beverages and wine in proximity to a, uh, to a church. So what I did, you know, I mean, I just, you know, I did define what a, a church building was, and, uh, I took this, I can't remember what other city, uh, that, that I kind of stole this from.
Was it Dublin?
But, you know, it defines a standalone building, uh, where they regularly worship, worship services are performed. Uh, so basically what we're looking at is if we're talking about a church building, we're talking about where the third church on Sunday, where they regularly worship. The, the, uh, the next section, the subsection B, that excludes certain things, and that's just state law, then. Uh, what, what I did, when you start talking about the, the distances and the measurements, uh, this is, this also is from state law and from state regulations. Uh, over the years, there's been various, uh, we've been trying to follow what, uh, what, what you measure, uh. Uh, here, according to the regs, is that you develop this straight line, but when you, you know, when you're talking about, uh, you say the straight line from the front door, the district, road, and the path to the front door of the church or alcohol treatment center. When you're talking about, um, churches and schools, uh, I'm sorry, when you're talking about, uh, the church or alcohol treatment center, it's door to door. When you're talking about a, uh, school building, educational building, or school ground, or college campus, it's from the front door to the property line. So that, that when you, when you think back on, uh, the, the business requirements, they talk about the college campus, the school grounds. So then you're really talking about from the building that you're selling alcohol to the property line, whereas when you're talking about, um, the church, you're talking about from where you sell it to the actual physical building. So that's, that, that is how we, you know, uh, define our measurements as it relates to churches and alcohol treatment centers and school buildings. Uh, the other portions, um, really are, you know, again, you have some grandfather clauses in there, but after licenses and, and new skills, you know, you can put one there. Uh, you know, housing authority, that's also state law. Um, when you get to subsection G of the proposed ordinance, this is basically taken, taken right out of our, uh, our ordinance, end of this draft, where we exclude, uh, uh, downtown commercial and portions of, uh, of, uh, downtown. And then when it talks about subsection two, when you get outside of commercial downtown and these other, uh, properties are described, when you talk about, uh, the construction line premises, there's a minimum of one hundred yards, there's measured a straight line from the front door of premises from one time to time, some of the alcohol beverages thrown to the front door of the building of the church, school, or college. So right now, you know, we call it our regulation of on-premise, uh, consumption outside of, of commercial downtown and those other districts, we are requiring one hundred yards from front door to front door. So kind of, you know, in a, in a nutshell, uh, when you talk about retail sales, you know, what we have, when we begin this ordinance, is state law. It does not regulate retail sales as it relates to churches, and we start talking about on-premise consumption, uh, it's, it's a hundred yards, uh, front door to front door. Um, then, uh, what I have done is there is, uh, we have Lewis other provisions as far as location that, that is in, that was formerly in section six dash six four. I went ahead and included those other location provisions as they have been in there. So when you look at the ordinance, you'll see that I have revised six dash six four. And the reason I took them out of six dash six four from six dash six five is because those sections of six, six four really dealt with location rather than licensing people. So I wanna have, you know, the people in six, six four, as far as who can get a license, and, and the, and all of the location provisions in one place, and put them all in six, six five. So that's, that's, that's everything in a nutshell, uh, kind of summarizing about what this is. And I think one of the previous decisions y'all made, we said that, that, again, is that whether, uh, you want to have any co-adiction of retail sales of alcohol or the malt beverages launched, uh, and not send you to church, but that's not something that's, that's specifically at this point in this draft. And once, if you have anything else you wanna add to that, and you would put it to the other.
The only other thing that, uh, brought to mind was, um, we're going to have to address entertainment establishments.
That's right.
And you, you did not address that in this ordinance, that that would come at a later date, according to the presenters, entertainment establishments, uh, are, we will have to remove them.
Yeah, by the way, what, what they've done, what they, they have a, uh, a bill that's passed both the, uh, House and the Senate whereby if you, the only people that can run into a, uh, uh, is people who are over twenty-one, unless you're accompanied, I think, by your parents or your spouse, there might be one other person. So right now, if, if, but the government has not signed that bill yet, I don't see any reason why it won't be signing it, so it's not quiet yet. But in the event the government does sign it, then, uh, you know, uh, a current permission of under twenty-one, eighteen, eighteen-year-olds, twenty-one, is going into entertainment establishment, that will not, we, we will not be able to do that if it's not reassigned to, to legislation.
So whenever you guys are quoting this, just remember that there's three types of distance measurements. And Rob talked about all three of those. It's not always from property line to property, in fact, it's never from property line to property line. You know, some of it's door to door, some of it's door to property line.
Your signatory, your signatory is always gonna be from the door that sells it, and then to the door of a church or the alcohol treatment center, or from the door to the school campus for lack of a, a word. And I started from the, yeah, to the property line of school campus.
Rob, could we, uh, create a distance requirement, uh, to church property that is contiguous to a church building?
I'm sorry, Wes, I didn't quite hear that.
As, you know, I know, I understand it's state law, but we can make it tougher.
You can make it stricter.
Right, yeah. Um, what I was asking you is, uh, Rob, is can we create a distance requirement to church property that's contiguous to a church building?
Well, the, what, what I was looking to accomplish, and, and maybe I haven't, but what, what I am trying to accomplish here is that can we have a restriction, a distance restriction from the alcohol seller, that we are measuring from the front door of the alcohol seller to the front door of the main church?
Mm-hmm.
I, I think what you're gonna have to do that, and I use, uh, First Baptist Church for example, they have, they've purchased a whole block that they're on right now.
That's right.
And they've also purchased more property further down the block. So it's conceivable that you could have a, a church purchase two or three blocks of property, and then if you put the business requirement on it, you're really restricted, what business is that can actually sell alcohol, that you sell alcohol close to a church property.
Does a street that, that divides two pieces of property, is, is that considered still contiguous?
The street is not made, it is still, uh, it's, it's.
Okay.
Okay.
So just because you have property across the street, when you're looking at distances for property from what we're talking about, that church across the street right away isn't considered.
Okay.
It's just like if right over next to it.
I got you.
And, and I'll give you another example, uh, when we talk about schools and campuses, Cypress on the Green, out of Cypress Freeds, right there, left, the commercial area. Uh, that one, put the, the school there actually, it's gonna be a upscale wine and cheese shop, uh, but because of state law, the eighty-foot right away of Kent Road is right adjacent to the, to that high school campus. So you can't put alcohol sales within, wherever the distance was, of a campus, a hundred yards, two hundred yards, whatever it was. So you have to be really careful about when you start putting distances on things, uh.
Well, is the, uh, uh, the church, the definition of church building, um, go back.
Basically, it's all about sanctuary.
Sanctuaries. Well, a church like First Baptist has two sanctuaries.
We could ask that question directly.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we did relate, you know, the issue at First United Methodist.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we mentioned the parsonage and the, what's that, when they said, the parsonage is considered residence.
Mm-hmm.
So it would not come into the equation.
That would be considered church property? That would fall under that definition?
No, I believe, no, this reason. And then the church, I'm just, it's church, I'm, I'm, uh.
They, they have, they have like a Sunday school in there.
They said that your sanctuary, now, if you're looking to change it to property, that, I mean, of course, that's different, but if, if it's, if you're keeping what's state law.
I thought there was a definition for church property.
Door to door in state law. What about if, uh, there's a lot of, uh, trucks talk.
You know, I just, so, we, we asked that question on Monday about, uh, church building. That's how I was, I was, uh, asking more along, you know, just as what is, how does state law treat a church building? What is church building for the state law? And really, Rona, I think you'll agree, they didn't give me a, an answer on that. They don't, they, they don't really define a church building for the purposes of state law. But I think, you know, but, but since state law does not regulate, uh, churches as the malt beverages and wine, we are have liberty to define what we think is a church building. Now, again, that's totally up to city council, as far as whether or not you wanna restrict that to the, the, the main church or some other building. But, uh, but I think that what, what I was looking to do, as I said, was just find, identify, what is the main place of worship? And that is where we will make our measurements to that front door.
Rob, to stay, um, in line with our definitions, shouldn't we have the same definition for religious facility and church building?
Well, I mean, that's, that is certainly, uh, you know, a thought, is there, um, I, I actually, Wes, I had to really consider looking at, um, you know, how we define a church building or any religious facility.
Yeah.
But I mean, it, it appears that, uh, they, they appear very similar, you know?
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I mean, this, I mean, this is something that's out there, I mean, you, what, what are y'all's thoughts about allowing retail sales of wine and malt beverages, uh, as far as, uh, their proximity to a church? Do you have any desire to have any, uh, distance requirement for the retail sales to a church? Cause the state law does not.
Having. The, uh, subsection of, uh, Little Pantry.
Yes.
And, and there, there are two churches right there.
Right next to it, the church is taken in after the pantry is there.
That's what I'm trying to step, okay, so they, okay.
Grandfather.
So that'd be grandfathered in, and then they actually have a year after.
Answer is there for the churches.
Okay.
Yeah.
Doesn't state law give them a year after their license expires, that somebody could come in, they got twelve months to, uh, reestablish alcohol sales or a license at that location before it?
Well, one for six months.
I don't know about that.
I, I thought it was.
It's in, it's in this ordinance, we saw it.
The, the, the handy, the Little Pantry that's on South Central was there and established and had retail sales of, of malt beverages prior to the church.
Church, come on.
So the Little Pantry is there by.
Unless they shut down and stay closed for six months or one year, then it, then it can't be grandfathered.
I, I don't think, I think based on the fact that it's there first, I'll have to look at that, I read that today.
Yeah.
But talked about several minutes.
Who's there first? Yeah, okay, Little Pantry was there first, for the churches.
But if Little Pantry closes.
There is a provision that if the alcohol establishment is there first, and the subsequent school or church is built, the alcohol people can stay.
That's right.
Unless they close, right, Rob? And they're closed for over six.
Well, if they close, and I think there's, Jim, I can look that up, but I think if they close, uh, in, it's either six months or twelve months.
Right.
Right. Twelve months, that's right.
There's kind of, uh, grandfather in there.
That's right, okay. So if they don't get it within that, it's, it's kind of like the, uh, uh, the mobile homes that we have inside the city limits. If, 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 if they go out, they've got, I know they've got six months, I think.
That's right.
It's almost over section three D, the one, two, three, four, seven, errors, section three D.
Section three. Gosh, you got numbers eyes and ease and. Section D, number three?
Start on the back of page two.
Twelve months.
Twelve months, yeah. Okay.
Any other question? Rob, thank you, uh. Thank you, everybody. Um.
We need to go into call making.
Yeah, this, this meeting is, uh, completed, and we will now, do we, we're gonna need Bert for this executive session?
No.
Okay.